Good evening, everyone. It is 6:03 on Wednesday, June 10th, and I am calling to order the board meeting of the HUSD school board. My name is Caitlin Hollister, and I am the Chair of the Board. First, I'd like to start with a few details everyone should know. Our meeting is available to view and listen on Mad River TV, as well as on our website. Thanks to Anthony@MadRiverTV for featuring our contact info for our six town clerks on the screen, so that viewers can call or email for their mail-in ballots in advance of our June 16th vote. Also online is our board packet, so you can follow along with our materials this evening. That's husd.org/board. If you look to the right and scroll down to the 2019-2020 packets, tonight's is the first link. We want to encourage you to request a ballot for our budget re-vote by calling or emailing your town clerk, and it is not too late to do so. Our voting date is June 16th, that's Tuesday, and all ballots must be received by town clerks by then or cast through in-person voting in each town. We strongly encourage everyone to vote. And it is easy to find out more about the budget. We have put together summary information on our website. If you go to the homepage near the top, there is a link next to the word "vote" that will take you to the summaries. I also want to thank our town clerks for facilitating the election process. They've been working very hard to get the mail-in ballots out to voters, as well as to figure out the logistics for next Tuesday's voting in each of their towns. So, thank you. Before we move on to public comment, I'd like to address the dramatic events underway across our country, bringing renewed urgency to address the impact of racism in every corner of our society. Here in HUSD, we are not isolated from this conversation. And I want to publicly acknowledge that we can, should, and will do better. As with so many issues, our students are the leaders here, demanding that we, the adults, take responsibility to make our schools safer, more welcoming, and more inclusive. We are proud of our HUSD schools, but we know that there are students and staff who do not always feel a sense of belonging or enfranchisement here. I will be asking our board to consider next steps to address systemic racism that impacts our students, families, and staff. Please know that I welcome your thoughts on this topic and look forward to many productive conversations ahead. And more importantly, look forward to turning those conversations into effective action in our district. Typically... Moving on to the logistics of the evening, as important as that topic is, I wanted to make that statement and make it clear. And please stay tuned for more. So, we typically use a speaker list to call on folks in the order they sign up. In our online meetings, I ask all interested speakers to click on the raised hand button or *9 on your phone, and I will repeat your name to indicate that I have recorded it. I will then choose names out of a hat, typically offering each speaker up to three minutes to address the board. This evening, if there are more speakers than we might accommodate in our time, I would ask you to try to keep your remarks even more concise. And I do hope that you will consider this in order to allow us to hear as many voices as possible. We have received many emails in recent days, and I would encourage you that if you have already shared your thoughts by email, you might consider allowing folks to speak first who have not done so electronically. If you have more to share with us that does not fit within the timeframe, we invite you to email the board with your thoughts or to speak during public comment at a future board meeting. Please know that we will not respond to public comments, but we will be listening carefully. If I indicate your time is up, please end your remarks, as we will be moving on to the remaining business of the meeting. At the end of the public comment section, I will offer any clarifying remarks if I can quickly address any of the topics raised. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening. At this time, please click on the raised hand button if you would like to make a comment. If you are calling by phone, press *9. All right, I'm going to go first to Russ. Let me unmute you. And, go ahead, Russ. I think you may have to unmute. Oh, sorry, I didn't hit it yet. Oh, okay, I'm going to need to move you over, Russ, because of a Zoom platform issue. So, let me just see. Give me a moment. All right. Now, Russ, are you able to speak here? I'm not hearing you. Is anyone hearing you? No. Russ, I'm going to give you a minute to see if we can get you back on. We're not hearing you. So, I'm going to go to Steve, and I'll come back to you. Steve... Oh, I'm also going to need to use to move you over. Sorry, something's happening with Zoom tonight, where if you're on an older version of the program, I'm having to change your status. So, Steve, go ahead. I think you'll need to unmute first. Am I losing? Are you hearing Steve? Steve, we're still not hearing you. I see you're unmuted, but I don't... All right. I'm not hearing Steve either. I'm going to try to go to Cory.
How about now?
Oh, you're good, sorry. Okay, Cory, hold on. Steve, you're good.
There's multiple buttons you have to push to unmute.
I apologize.
And you wonder if there's, you know, two negatives makes a positive or something? I don't know. Anyway, thank you.
Go ahead, thank you.
Great, thanks. This is Steve Otifay from Waterbury, and there's a couple of things on my mind tonight. First, I want to begin by encouraging the board to do a little bit of level-setting regarding the process used to conduct the superintendent's performance evaluation, specifically what kinds of information and sources are appropriate to that process. Seems like a whole bunch of people have seen fit to insert themselves into it by offering up their unsolicited personal opinions of the superintendent, which unfortunately, in many cases, appear to be based on or influenced by rumor, hearsay, unsubstantiated or unverified claims of one sort or another. You know, I know the superintendent pretty well, having worked with her for five years as a board member and as an executive committee member. And it's profoundly disappointing to read some of the violent, baseless insults and aspersions to say nothing of the occasional criticisms of a more personal nature, which in many cases are appallingly tinged with misogyny. Even the more muted critiques presented without apparent ranker are not relevant or appropriate for the board to consider in their evaluation. Maybe if it were required job qualification to win a popularity contest, this influx of input might be relevant. But in a district like ours with such heterogeneous views on issues of moment, no leader is going to be liked by everyone all the time, and nothing I remember about the performance criteria forming the basis for an annual review makes this kind of feedback appropriate to be considered by the board. So, I urge you, don't be distracted by this noise. Instead, focus your efforts and attention on the established performance review criteria and on those voices entitled by virtue of their professional roles in the district to provide relevant feedback. But if any of you are determined to cast a wider net, you should know that I, speaking for myself, and in a little bit of hearsay for people I know, I've had a great many disagreements with the superintendent over the years, but I have every competence and ability to execute the role effectively and with integrity. And I, and almost all of the school district board alumni that I know approve of her performance and support the renewal of her employment contract. But like I said, you shouldn't listen to me. You should follow the process. Second, I've been hearing a couple of things that fall into the general category of voter disenfranchisement. First, I've been hearing that there's a push from some folks in the district to modify the weighted voting scheme through which the board takes action. And while it's true that the waiting scheme results in individual directors with greater or lesser voting power, that's simply a mathematical consequence of allocating each town's voting power, which is based on the town's population, to the number of board members it has. If you want each board member to have one vote, you know, it'd have to be a hell of a big board. So, you know, I urge you to consider upholding, you know, principles of proportional representation. To do otherwise would be blatantly anti-democratic and contrary to any rational understanding of proportional representation.
That's time, Steve. Steve, that's time. That's three minutes.
That's too bad, because I got a lot more to say. But thank you for the opportunity.
Come back next time. Thank you, Steve. Russ, can you join us now? I hear something. No. Let's see. I see you in here, but I haven't been able to hear you, Russ. Okay. We'll come back to you again. I think Cory is next. Cory, are you still here?
Yes.
Go ahead. Thank you, Cory, go ahead.
All right. So, first, I just want to say that I appreciate the extra stress you are facing around trying to pass a budget, and now the pandemic. And I want to thank you for the time and energy you put into this work. You know, at the end of the day, I know you are trying to do the best for our schools, whether I happen to agree with your point of view or not. And also, I want to be clear that I don't know Ms. Neese personally, and I'm not speaking to what kind of friend or family member she might be. All I'm commenting on is my perspective on the approach she has had with her job in our school district. I wrote a letter to the board just after her white paper suggesting the closure of two schools a mere five months after our district's unification. And at the time, the chair would not allow it into the minutes. It is unfortunate that I still find it almost three years later, and would like to share a paragraph from it again. While I'm certainly disappointed by the current proposal to cut staff at two of our schools as one of the first actions of the HUSD, I'm not surprised that this is out the leadership of our supervisory union has chosen to take. Over the past eight-plus years that I have been directly involved in our local public education system, I have seen our superintendent continually spread fear, uncertainty, and doubt in our schools and communities. While potentially necessary actions, there have been too many instances of divisive tactics as a strategy for success. Whether asking for an 8% raise when schools were told they had to level or defund, or publicly clashing with the landlords of the previous SU offices, or the abrupt and confusing departure of the principals at both Moretown and Facetown Schools, and the hostile removal of a longtime and beloved staff member at the Warren School. This ongoing leadership approach leaves me very concerned about the current and future climate of the HUSD and its ultimate effect on students. Instead, I would like to see more inclusive and collaborative work done by both the SU and the board on bringing our six towns together to create a functioning and cohesive district that works for all of our students. So, that was the paragraph from the letter from three years ago. In the past three years, I can now add to that list releasing the white paper so soon after unification, when this school redesign failed, then attempting to achieve it through budgeting, shutting staff out of the process and serving RIF notices less than 48 hours after a board meeting where motions were made around partnership and collaboration. These are not isolated one-time incidents, but a pattern. It is time for a change. Thank you.
Thank you, Cory. I think I had one other person with a hand up. I heard someone on the phone. And I also don't see Russ. So, if you are here again, please raise your hand. Okay. So, I'm not seeing any additional hands, so I think we will be moving on to the rest of our agenda this evening. Thank you all. What I would like to do is, in approving our agenda, I have three items to add tonight's agenda before the board approves. The first two regard conflict of interest complaints, one regarding Jeremy Tretiak and one regarding Michael Frank. So, I'm going to ask for those agenda items immediately following the consent agenda, each one for up to 10 minutes. I'm also going to ask for a brief executive session for the purpose of discussing a grievance for which premature general public knowledge would clearly place the public body or person involved at a substantial disadvantage. I expect this to be no more than 15 minutes. So, those are my additions to tonight's agenda. Are there any objections to approving tonight's agenda with those changes? I'm not hearing anyone who's speaking in the room. Make sure that you're speaking through Zoom or raising a hand. Okay. All right. So, hearing no... Oh, Teresa did, thank you. Okay, good. Go ahead, Teresa.
I'm going to abstain.
From the approval of the agenda?
Correct.
Great, okay. But any objections to approving tonight's agenda? Thank you. Okay. In terms of tonight's consent agenda, do I hear any objections to approving tonight's consent agenda? Teresa?
Yes. You know, I'm against.
So, you would vote no?
Correct.
Okay, so I think we'll pull up the vote. Michael, go ahead. Okay. So, we'll do a quick roll call for tonight's consent agenda. I'll start with Tari.
Yes.
Tim?
Yeah.
Teresa is no. Rosemarie? Michael?
Abstain.
Thank you. Lisa?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Jonathan? I'll come back to Jonathan. Jeremy? Okay, great. We got you. Jeremy? Christine?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Alec?
Yes.
Terrific, okay. Jonathan was a yes. Great. Okay, thank you, folks. So, now we move on to the new addition. We are following our policy B3 regarding conflict of interest. And when a constituent or a board member raises a concern about a conflict of interest, we take it up as a board. And what I do is I'm going to first offer Jeremy a chance to speak to this. Jeremy, we have received a complaint from community member Neil Nussbaum that you may have a conflict of interest in tonight's discussion about the superintendent's evaluation and contract because of your work for Mountain Behavioral Services. I invite you to address the board as to whether you believe you have a conflict and share your rationale for this conclusion.
Thanks. So, I have a statement here. Probably take about five minutes, so half that time. Apologize if that was a little long for the allotted agenda item. But I'll start by making a quick correction to the record so that we all have an accurate place to start from. I work for a company called Green Mountain Behavior Consulting, although I have seen it referenced as Green Mountain Behavior Services in articles and correspondences recently. Most of the time, we call it GMBC for short. That said, here's a brief overview of what we do. The company operates a small, independent school in Williston for students who benefit from therapeutic behavioral services in an alternative setting. We also operate an early intervention center for children on the autism spectrum. Additionally, we provide in-home and community-based medically indicated treatment outside of school hours to children on the autism spectrum. All of the company's work is grounded in the principles of applied behavior analysis, and we are extremely proud of the positive change this science and our work have brought to our state. The company also provides contracted behavioral intervention services within public schools across a wide swath of central and northern Vermont, which is probably most relevant to the current question regarding potential conflict of interest. Our school-based inclusion program's primary goal is to keep kids in their home schools with appropriate and robust access to the education to which they have a right. We also place stakeholder satisfaction as a high priority and strive to keep our staff invigorated and excited about the work we do, which is challenging work, to be sure. We pay our staff good wages and aim to retain and attract people to this field. In fact, the bulk of our staff is comprised of the young adults that Vermont so desperately needs in its workforce to keep our state viable. Having received their permission, I also thought it would be nice to acknowledge that the two staff that I directly oversee who work in this district were both raised in our Harwood community and continue to live and work in this beautiful place. I am a salaried employee of GMBC. I do not see more or fewer dollars in my paycheck based on the number of contracts we have in this district or any other. Here is where I want to be very clear and directly addressing some misconceptions that appear to be floating around out there. I am not an owner or partner at GMBC. Again, I do not have any ownership or profit-sharing stake in GMBC. The company's CEO retains 100% ownership and decision-making authority. Additionally, it has been suggested both indirectly and directly that the superintendent, quote, "writes my checks." This is not and has not ever been true. In fact, I cannot recall a time in my work history at GMBC that I've actually even interacted with the superintendent. To the question of my role in the company as a designated corporate officer, I am currently assigned the secretary position on the GMBC corporate board, which is strictly an advisory board of the CEO, who again retains ultimate decision-making authority over the company's direction. I receive no additional compensation for serving in this role. Most recently, the work of the corporate board has been dominated by COVID-19-related planning, but prior to the cessation of in-person services for the company, my work on the board focused on introducing and developing a policy that would allow each of our staff to take a paid week off to engage in volunteer community service work for a local organization of their choice. Discussions around future agenda items have focused in the direction of increasing awareness and education for our employees related to racial and social issues at the forefront of our current national conversations. Finally, I want to address the way that schools access contracted behavioral intervention services. To be clear, GMBC does not knock on doors to sell our services to schools. We do not have a department for soliciting contracts. That is simply not the way we do business. Schools determine needs for specific services based on internal decisions made by a student's educational team. If that team decides that the school cannot provide the identified service internally, then a designated from that school or district will reach out to contracted service providers to receive information about the availability and appropriateness of the identified service from each organization. From there, contract negotiations would proceed according to standard rules of contractual engagement, and someone in my position would be called in to help facilitate provision of those services after this process has occurred. I should acknowledge here, in the interest of full disclosure, that my wife also provides services in the HUSD schools through her employer, Washington County Mental Health Services, an organization that could be considered, under certain conditions, a competitor with GMBC. However, with the current responsibilities that schools have managing the frontline of behavioral and mental health service provision for children, schools' needs for contracted service providers often overwhelms the capacity of organizations to provide these services. Quite frankly, I hope to be part of some creative thinking on this issue from as many angles as possible. To state my position clearly, I do not believe I have any conflict of interest in this or any other matter that has come before the board so far in my term. If I felt as though I could not have fulfilled one of the primary responsibilities of the school board, I never would have run for the position in the first place. While I fully believe that I can discuss and vote on the issues in front of us in an objective and impartial manner, I will not put up a fight or stand in the way it is the board's will that I recuse myself from the superintendent evaluation and contract process. I do not intend to add any more fodder for discord and disagreement into this conversation. In many ways, a small number of community members have given me an easy way out of putting my thoughts and vote on record regarding this challenging and complex process. But I would not choose the easy way out, and I completely accept the difficult responsibilities that I took on when I was sworn into this seat. Thank you for hearing my statement, and I welcome any questions.
All right, back to speaking. Thank you, Jeremy. I do want to note that according to our policy, which is very similar to policies in school districts around the state and was updated and approved a year ago by this board, any decisions about whether or not to vote are solely up to the board members themselves. Our policy indicates that when a community member or fellow board member makes a complaint about a conflict of interest, and the board member disagrees that a conflict exists, then the board may choose to hold an informal hearing to determine if a conflict exists. However, no matter the outcome of this, it cannot actually, meaning the board, cannot actually take away the member's choice to vote. So, at this point, I would invite any board questions for Jeremy, and then I would ask if there is anyone who believes we do need a hearing. At that point, we would ask for a motion. But any questions first for Jeremy? Teresa?
Two questions. So, our policy guidelines talk about the appearance. It's not about action, but it is the appearance of conflict of interest. And we also discuss the direct or indirect. The way my company works is indirect is your employer, and it is about appearance, not action. I want to be very clear, Jeremy. I think you're honest and good, and I don't think there's any impropriety here. So, my question for you, Jeremy, is can you respond to how the appearance doesn't make you look like you're in conflict? And also, do you believe whether or not indirect conflict involves your employer?
Well, sure, yeah.[1536.18] I mean, to the question of appearance, I don't know where that ends. So if, for instance, we were to vote on a school closure, and many board members have connected their home values or home values in a town with a school that closes into the conversation, I don't know if that would be indirect, too. And so I don't, I don't, you know, if there is appearance here, then I'm willing to hear that conversation and willing to sit through the board conversation. But, you know, I'm going to tell the board right now, here in this room, and tell the community who's watching and is going to watch later that there is no conflict of interest. And so appearance, it's up to the eye of the beholder. I don't know where that limit ends. I think that policy or that is written so vaguely that we could call that into question pretty limitlessly. And so, you know, I don't intend to recuse myself from this vote and this conversation. So if there is an intense desire among board members to have that conversation around appearance, that's up to the board. But I, you know, I don't know how to define appearance in a way that takes on anything but a sort of limitless sense of what anyone could say, you know, as far as what they disagreed with, so.
Any other questions? Is there anyone who'd like to make a motion for us to hold an informal hearing at a later date? All right, not hearing a motion, we're going to move on to the second item. Thank you again, Jeremy. We also received a conflict of interest from community member, a conflict of interest complaint from community member Neil Nussbaum. And this one's directed to Michael. Michael, that you may have a conflict of interest in tonight's discussion, given that your spouse is an employee of the school district. So I invite you to address the board as to whether you believe you have a conflict and share your rationale for your conclusion.
Caitlin, I do not believe that I have any conflict that restricts me from doing my duty as school director for evaluating the superintendent of schools. I believe that I and my fellow board member have been singled out due to previous statements and views. As one member of a district said in his email to the board, no such charges have been leveled at other board members who are perceived to be critical to the superintendent, such as one who runs a preschool and is directly financially impacted by HUUSD decisions. We are all members of the community and have ties out our schools. My wife works for HUUSD at Harwood Middle and High School. She reports to the principal and not the superintendent. Due to her role, she has not been involved in any way with evaluation of the superintendent. I do not believe that I nor any of my fellow board members have any conflicts that restrict them from doing one of their main duties as a member of the Board of School Directors.
Thank you, Michael. Teresa, a question?
Two things. I just want to note that Michael's spouse's role is very unique to our district. We have touted it as unique to our district. And I also feel like his comment makes it as a point of order. I believe we should let Kelly Hackett speak because he has implied that she has a conflict of interest or that it's somehow the same or different.
Yes, and Kelly and I have agreed that she can make a statement this evening, as any other board member would be welcome to do. Thank you. Michael, do you have another?
I want to make clear, it may have been there. Let me repeat. I do not believe that I nor any of my fellow board members have any conflicts that restrict them from doing their main duties as a member of the Board of School Directors. For full clarification here, I am not saying that Kelly has any conflict of interest in doing her duties. For the record, thank you.
Thank you. Christine?
Yeah, I just want to...
You got to unmute, too.
Okay. Michael, I just want to be clear. By on statute, you wouldn't have a conflict either because I believe Vermont statute defines a conflict of interest. And did we clarify that that's all clear according to statute?
Yeah, I can address that further. That's about eligibility. And so in the statute, the... Those who are eligible for school boards. I should say, the only folks who are not eligible to serve on a school board are employees, directly employees. So we have had close family members serve on our boards in the past. And if the statute indicated that a spouse or parent or child of an employee was ineligible, they would not be able to run for office or serve in this role. Any further questions? Teresa?
It's just a comment. I feel kind of disappointed that board members or even the public kind of questioned the integrity of the people that are asking the question. You know, we had a board member, Linda Hazard, who chose not to run, which is for a seat, which is now Linda Hazard's seat. She's in a very similar situation to Jeremy. I think it's an honest question, and I think it was honestly asked, and I think that needs to be noted in the record. I think it was very, very unfair that certain board members cited, and also the public cited, that there was some sort of rancor or people didn't believe in it, because that's not why I brought it up. I have been in a publicly traded company for 15 years, and in my point of view, having gone through a number of trainings, at least 15 of them, there is a perceived conflict of interest. I'm not going to argue with it or ask for a hearing, but...
I do hear point of order. Hold on, go ahead, Rosemarie.
Should this be in Board reflections or board feedback?
Fair enough. I think Teresa, if you can focus your points on the conflict of interest regarding Michael, that is what's on the table right now.
That's fine, I'm done. Thank you.
So I did want to give Kelly the opportunity to address the board as well. And if there's any other board members who would like to do so, you're certainly welcome to do that after Kelly makes her statement. Go ahead, Kelly.
Thank you. So there have been some interchanges between constituents and other board members related to conflict of interest. And I wanted to take the opportunity to acknowledge my connection to the school budget and the superintendent, and also invite the public and other board members to get in touch if they want to learn more, especially because I realize that a lot of what conflict of interest is about is related to perception. Please note that if you reach out to me, I understand you are not necessarily doubting my ability to make impartial decisions. I understand that it is critical that each of us be publicly upfront about our potential conflicts, even if we believe them to be remote. I also believe that naming our potential conflicts is part of what keeps us honest with ourselves and how we honor our votes and our voters. Here is my relationship with the budget and the superintendent. I own a childcare program that serves pre-K children and their families. While most of the funding comes from individual families themselves, and a small portion comes from the state of Vermont, which provides access to publicly funded pre-kindergarten, also known as Act 166. Although it is a state-run program for in-state funds, school districts act as a pass-through contractual and fiscal agents. I have a contract with 16 districts, of which HUUSD is one. While each district technically reimburses money to providers like me, they also get an equal amount of funding from the state as reimbursement. They reimburse me, however, I... The district's family, so they're seeing a lot of money. I maintain that and do not have a conflict of interest because of AOE, who decides to pre-K providers eligible for funding, as well as how much money each provider program receives per student. The families themselves make the decision on where to send their child for preschool. I am not a lawyer, but in reading Act 166, I don't believe it gives any decision-making power to the superintendent. It does not seem to allow for narrow exception for the school board to limit geographic boundaries within which they will pay tuition in qualified providers even if the decision would be made jointly with the Agency of Human Services and other parties. Even so, our board chooses to consider this path. I certainly would recuse myself from this vote. In short, the superintendent has no bearing on how my business is compensated, and I do not intend to recuse myself from the vote on the superintendent contract tonight. However, I remain open to recusal for future votes. I invite the board colleagues and constituents to reach out to me if they feel there is something I have not considered in my assessment of the situation with respect to conflict of interest.
Thank you, Kelly. I realize I was remiss in not asking the board members first if there was anyone who would like to make a motion for an informal hearing regarding the complaint on Michael Frank. So I want to do that before I move on to anyone else. Not hearing any motion. Is there anyone else from the board who would like to address the rest of the board this evening on the topic of conflict of interest? I have a brief statement that I also want to share. I have been asked as chair to share my opinion on the subject at hand. My opinion is as follows. Given that the hiring and the evaluation of the superintendent is one of the five primary functions of a school board, I would expect that anyone who would present a conflict in terms of this function or any of the other major responsibilities of a board would be ineligible to serve. According to state statute, the only individuals who are ineligible to serve on a school board are those employed by the school district. Given that Jeremy and Michael and Kelly and all of us are all eligible to serve, I consider all of us eligible to vote on this topic. Secondly, our policy indicates that a conflict of interest may exist when a board member, quote, "would benefit from or be harmed by his or her actions as a member of the board." I see no evidence to indicate that any board member would benefit from or be harmed by a vote on the superintendent's contract. The decision about a conflict is ultimately up to the board member, him or herself. And we have seen these two individuals, who were specifically named in the complaints, abstain from other votes when they feel they have a conflict or an appearance of conflict. I respect their integrity, as I do all members of this board, and trust all of us to make the appropriate judgment call. So I'm going to move on now to the next item, which is the final addition to tonight's agenda. The first executive session, I'd be looking for a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing a grievance, premature general knowledge of which would clearly place the public body or person involved at a substantial disadvantage. Tari, go ahead.
So moved.
Thanks. I'm trying to use the Zoom for this officially, folks. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, great, I hear a second. I want to note to the public that this will be a brief executive session. We will log off ourselves, but you can stay in the meeting. And then when we come back in, we will resume. We will be then taking up another motion for a second executive session that we expect to be a much longer one this evening. So board members, right now, I would like to ask you to log off, and I will be joining you more in person. Thank you. Yeah, just leave the meeting. Curtis is now the host, and so I'm just going to join. Oh, and I need to just now bring these folks on. Great. All right, we are exiting our executive session at 7:11. Taking no action, but I do want to indicate that, as I stated previously, we have received a complaint regarding a conversation that occurred in 2016 between a parent and our superintendent, and we'll be proceeding with an investigation conducted by an impartial third party. I'd also like to note that the board is interested and will plan to add to our work plan a broader conversation about school climate and racism in our district and how to address that. So that is all we have to say on the matter for tonight and to be continued. I'm going to ask now for a second executive session. The recommended motion is that we move to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing an employee's contract, because doing so in public session will clearly place that employee at a substantial disadvantage. Is there a motion? I see Alex. Is there a second?
Second.
Let's see, thank you. So I just want to make sure that we record this for our minutes a person. And so we will log off, and those who want to... Oh, sorry. Thank you. I do need to vote on this first. Are there any objections to our entering executive session? Hearing none. We will now move at 7:12 into executive session. For those listening in from the public, this is likely to be more than two hours this evening. The meeting will continue, and we will log back in when we are done in order to take any action this evening. So thank you, folks. And board members, I invite you to log off here, and we will move forward. All right, hi, folks, we're back.
Hi, Lisa.
Thank you. And I have... I don't have my stuff. Oh, she has my stuff. We're back. Just getting logged on again, folks. I did.
Can you hear me? Yeah.
No.
You can just leave it on mute.
All right.
Sorry.
We are going to resume. And it is now 10:25 PM. We are coming out of executive session, and we have a motion to consider. Christine, do you want to go ahead?
Sure, I would like to make a motion that we notify the superintendent...
Oh, sorry, you're muted. Go ahead.
I'm unmuted now. I would like to make a motion that we notify the superintendent of renewal for a one-year successor to the current contract.
Is there a second? You have a second, thank you. And Tari's going to pull up our... All right, I'm going to call from the bottom up, so... Oops, sorry. Oh, and we'll... We're going to move on to the vote. So Tari, what is your vote?
Yes.
Tim? Teresa? Rosemarie? Michael?
Yes.
Lisa?
No.
Kristen?
No.
Kelly? Jonathan? Are you there, Jonathan?
Sorry, I was muted.
No. Jeremy? Christine?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Alec?
And I am voting yes.
So with 69.9% of the vote, this motion will carry. I do want to indicate to the public that we will have further communication coming out by midday on Friday. In the meantime, this is the extent of our board's communication, is the decision. And please know that we will have further details forthcoming. Given how late it is, we are going to move on to adjourn and get you some information in the next few days. So thank you all for hanging in there, especially those who are still attending with us tonight. I want to also thank all of the board members who came here to Harwood this evening and engaged in a very productive discussion and a productive meeting. So thanks to you all. I hear from Rosemarie, a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Okay, good night, folks.
Thank you, Caitlin. Have a good night.